Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I had a quick notice of the meeting of the Long Hill Township Board of Education was given as required by the Open Public Meeting Acts as follows. Notice was sent to the Echo Sentinel and Daily Record on February 8th, 2024. Notices were posted on the bulletin board in the first floor entrance hall of the School District Administration Building, Gillette, New Jersey. Notices were filed with the township clerk and notices were mailed to all persons who have requested individual notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mrs. Daley?
Here.
Mrs. Derek Foster?
Here.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Here.
Dr. Marr?
Here.
Mrs. McLennan? Ms. Nyquist?
Here.
Ms. Rubelow? And Mrs. Case?
Here. Thank you. Get to start off with the good stuff.
Yeah.
Why all of you guys are here, so thank you guys for coming. We're very excited and proud of you. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alexis to start the presentation.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Case. We're thrilled to have you here. We enjoyed watching you play. We are proud of you. I won't go on and on, but I will also just say I was most impressed by how well you played as a team. And that goes from the way you move the ball in the court, the way you play defense, the way you listen to your coaches, the way you trusted each other as teammates and all of that. You put together a lot of talent with some really good coaches and you end up with success. So we're super proud of you and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Vittarella.
Yes. Okay, good evening, everyone. So in honor of both teams, we're going to call the girls first and then we're going to go through the boys. So the Board of Education and the staff, we have plaques to dedicate to both teams, which will hang in Central Middle School, so they will be up with your picture, the record, everything. We have T-shirts for everyone and also certificates. So we'll go through and honor each student. So when you hear your name, please come up so you can get your certificate and your T-shirt. And then we like to take a picture at the end if that's possible, if the board would like to do that as well, too. So we'll start with the girls. Paige Anthony? Maybe if you, do you want to maybe stay up? I guess at the end, yeah. On that side, maybe it won't come across. Selena Puzo? She not here? Okay. Let's see. Elizabeth Clark? There you go, congratulations. Caroline Cannell? Maddie Falvey, I don't think is here tonight. And Riley Hall? Fiona Murphy? Micah Pritzloff? He's not here tonight. Kate Robertson? Serena Sabatella? Angelina Strower? Amanda Schatz? And Deirdre Vanderstreet? Angelina, you can come up. You're not late. Don't worry about it. And Coach Jennifer Blasia. And she has the plaque as well, too. So if anyone would like to take a picture first of the girls' team? Congratulations to the girls' team. And boys, you took it down to the wire, for sure. What an exciting season. And for the boys' team, we'll start with Cole Abiri? Not here? Simon Anderson? John Cannell? William Fernandez? Gavin Lawrence? Gavin Maharaj? Towns O'Connor? Christian Peralta? Timothy Pinto? Dion Rivera? Brady Simo? Jacob Sutton? Oh, and Noah. My, I apologize, wait, I missed you. I went out of order. And Coach Peter Hockmeyer? If anyone would like to come up and take a picture of the boys' team?
Just want to say real quick, a couple of words about the boys' team, real fast. Thank you again for recognizing the boys' team. It's been an outstanding season. And the program's been amazing for the past 10 years. Our teams have been, have captured the regular season championship three times in that, in those 10 years, have been in the tournament finals six times out of the 10 years, and have captured the championship three times of those six times. In the past three years, eighth graders Christian Peralta and Brady Simo have been a part of a very successful run of 38 wins to only seven losses. One of those losses was a couple of years in the finals, but we got it back this year and I appreciate that. The hard work and dedication of the players makes us a success each and every year. This season, our team recorded an undefeated season, winning 15 games and capturing the Central Jersey Junior Athletic Association's regular season championship and the Central Jersey Junior Athletic Association's tournament championships. This, the wins, the championships, the accolades are all wonderful and we do appreciate that. But what I'm most proud of is the growth and sometimes maturity, okay, of each of these players on and off the court. Our success this year and over the past many years is directly related to the players and their families. And I personally want to thank each and every one of them, okay, for all that you do, okay? And I hope you know that it's been an honor to be called your coach. So thank you very much. And thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. And I think Coach said it well, it's a testament to all of your work, but also the families and all of the support. It's a lot of time and energy and Burger King dinners and all the stuff that goes with that. So hopefully you guys remember this and really take it with you forward and, you know, use all the skills that you've developed as an athlete and use those to be leaders in the future. So congratulations. We are going to move into Dr. Jones's presentation, so for students and parents, if you guys want to make your way out, that's fine, you're welcome to stay, but we are going to move on to the presentation.
It's good? Thanks.
That's okay. Not as exciting as basketball.
All right. Yeah, no, no, that's fine. Thank you, Dr. Jones, for being here. We have our presentation. This originally started off as we were just going to report the second diagnostic results for the iReady diagnostic test that was administered in late January, but the more we thought about it, we thought it would be a good time to have a check-in and a sort of a mid-year progress toward district goals. Dr. Jones is presenting, but we all, the entire administrative team chipped in on coming up with these slides and some of the things we'd like to share with you tonight. What we did, just as an overview, is that we structured it around the four district goals, taking it one goal at a time, but really all four goals work towards the same, you know, objective of working towards raising academic performance here in our district. I guess it's important to note that all of the goals work together because we want to set the right conditions so we can make sure our students thrive. So you'll see that as the presentation comes together. We believe in a culture of inquiry, collaboration, and problem solving, and we're committed to establishing the educational environment to support those values. So first, you're going to hear about raising academic performance because that's our first goal. You're going to hear about professional learning, technology support we've put in place, supplemental programs, and data-informed decision-making, as well as personalized learning. The next goal is centered around engaging stakeholders in the entire school community, and you'll hear about what we're doing to engage students, staff, families, and community through communication, events, and activities, and collaboration. Third is aligning instructional spaces to support innovative teaching. And you're going to hear also about some cost-saving measures. So we're currently working on spaces, some of them we've talked about before, ones that began this summer and are finishing up now. Others, you'll hear about plans for the future. And then last, you'll hear about strengthening our inclusive culture and honoring the voices and potential of all individuals through programs, activities, and events that help us accomplish this, as well as student and teacher relationships, which are really at the heart of this critical work. So I'll stop there. I might chip in a little bit here and there, but it's all yours, Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Good evening. So raising academic performance, we have professional learning. We've had several district in-service days and Curriculum Mondays throughout the school year. We still have some Curriculum Mondays left. One of them focused, well, several of them focused this year on iReady. First, I think it's important to say that we took a lot of feedback from the community on iReady and some suggestions. So before spring break, Jack and I, well, more Jack, really figured out a way to pull the reports, the Diagnostic 1 from the fall, Diagnostic 2, and they will be uploaded into the parent portal so that, just like the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, but for K-2 parents, it will be up there just like you check report cards. So it will be in the parent portal. The norm assessment, which will show you how students performed against the national norm, and also a family report, so you have a little bit of understanding what you're reading, what you're looking at. And then before this is broadcasted on Genesis, I'm going to send out a letter to the community just how to log in and a little bit more about what you're looking at. And our Diagnostic 3 will take place the last week in May, very first week in June, so that will be out before the end of the school year. So you'll have all three to compare to. So that's first, I thought was important to share. And I thank some of the parents who had emailed and made some suggestions because we listened and we will be implementing those within the next few weeks. So we did have, as I was saying, some iReady trainings that took place this year. Most of them were during professional development days, others were during Curriculum Mondays. And sometimes we did have grade-level meetings at the K-5 level and team meetings at the middle school level, just continuing conversation with iReady and what we're doing. The formal iReady training sessions from iReady itself came to the district, focused on how to set everything up, the importance of iReady, how to read the data. Then once we have the data, what do we do with it? How do you plan for instruction? And then the last one we had, February 15th, was how do you tailor that to better the instruction in the classroom? And a lot of that is through the My Path option on iReady itself. And that's based off of the, how the students performed on their own diagnostics. So it may be different than what a peer is working on. And also what I recently learned that I shared with the Student Achievement Committee is it is very similar to the type of assessment we used in prior years, Linkit, in which you are tested in the very beginning of the year on standards that you have not been taught yet. So it's okay not to see all green at the top right away because we like to see some progress. So for students to perform, you know, as a little bit in the middle and just grow along the way is what we're really looking for. We also have had small group instruction training. Some of this took place on professional development days, but the majority was during PLC time and Curriculum Monday time. And this was taught by our interventionists, Danielle Minerva, Emily DiNunzio, Lauren Franklin, and who am I missing? Oh, Michelle Spinello. How can I miss Michelle Spinello? So they worked very closely with Ms. Dawson and I and have been training the teachers throughout the year and will continue to do that next year. So some of the small group instruction, what it looks like is covering phonemic awareness, covering targeted small group lessons. For example, some of them I actually saw today, stretch and say, touch and say, word chaining, phonics, heart words, which are words that you cannot sound out, so it's more like sight words. How to use decodable texts in small groups, how to use guided reading techniques, and then how to group students based on similarities with skills that they're learning. So you take a few students at a time and you build their skills together as a group. Okay, I'm just going to keep going and then if you have any questions, just let me know. So Conker Math, we brought Conker Math in probably about six or seven years ago and it was extremely well-received. The owner and math education specialist of Conker Math is Nancy Schultz. She's amazing. She came to the district in the evening to teach parents not the new standards, not what program to use, but how to understand the standards and how to understand what your child is doing at home, because math looks very different than when we were growing up with math. So we were very happy we were able to bring that back this year. We took a pause in 2020, 2021, and we slowly started to add teachers back, and it's been great. And we did budget for it, thank you, for Conker Math for next year, and we are continuing to send teachers out for that training. Just so you know, she doesn't teach, as I briefly said, she doesn't teach different programs. She doesn't represent different programs. She teaches you how to understand the standards. It's called unpacking the standards, and then how to teach math using whatever program your district has. She's very fond on manipulatives all the way up to fifth grade, that different way of learning, kinesthetic, visual, she's excellent. So we're very happy we were able to send teachers. And it's a series of workshops. It's not just one, it's three to five where one teacher will go to per year. And then, of course, they turnkey all of that, I'll jump to the PLC piece, but they turnkey that at grade-level meetings and share what they've learned. Collaboration and inquiry on ELA, this has a lot to do with the interventionists as well. We really continue to focus on the science of reading. And we've spent a lot of time over the last two years, and we're spending even more time on it going forward, for the science of reading. This really just teaches kids every way possible how to read. So there's five key components. A lot of it is what I had said before that iReady covers, but it's more phonemic awareness, which for parents who have older children, these terms may be unfamiliar. So phonemic awareness is the ability to just identify individual sounds in spoken words. We have phonics, which is reading instruction, how to understand how groups of letters make sounds and how they make words. Fluency, which is the ability to read words, phrases, stories, sentences in a timely fashion with enough speed and expression. Vocabulary is not only knowing what the words mean, but how to say them correctly in a sentence and understand them correctly in a passage. Comprehension is just the ability to understand what you're reading. So this is really what the science of reading focuses on, and we've done a lot of training with the teachers on the science of reading. It's been excellent. Our PD for a staff survey, what I've been working on is instead of mini surveys sent out throughout the year, I'm doing one large one to encompass all of the PD sessions for the year that the district has offered, anything on Curriculum Monday, Conker Math, even though we didn't house this professional development, we send teachers out. Also, multi-tiered system of support, which I'll be talking about in another few slides, that was outgoing, that we sent teachers out for that. There's HIV training, INRS training, so there's a lot. So I'm going to be taking account of everything that we have done this year, gaining feedback from the teachers, what did you like, what do we still need work on, and what would you like to see next year? So I can share those results if you want, towards the end of the school year. We've continued to partner with Watch Young Hills for learning walks. Mr. Vittarella and I attend as many as we can. We invite grades 6 through 8, pending on the subject, so let's say social studies. So 6 through 8 social studies teachers and special education teachers that teach social studies will go to the high school for, let's say, a morning. We all meet in the common room, as many other teachers from sending districts also attend. The director of curriculum from the high school attends and whatever supervisor for that subject attends, too. Principal pops in to say hello, superintendent pops in as well. And we just talk about what our goals are for the morning, what we would like to gain out of the informal walkthroughs. There's a schedule probably of about 45, 50 minutes where you can walk freely around the building, and there's a choice of different classrooms that you can go visit. So there's higher-level classrooms, lower-level classrooms, in-class support rooms, some electives, some requirements. And it's nice to see some students. I was just saying to the one parent here, their faces are the same when they were at Gillette, they're just a lot taller. So it's nice to see them in high school. They never remember me, but that's okay. Some may, some of the girls do, I don't know. But yeah, they're always like, oh, Dr. Jones. I'm like, hi, from 15 years ago.
You're like a fish out of your tank when you're not in Gillette, right?
I know, I know.
Really not looking for you.
I know. So when they see me at the high school, it's even, you know, more like, wow. But after the walkthroughs, we'll come back, we'll take notes, we'll share what we learned, we'll take back some practices with us if it's applicable. And then we talk about, you know, what is working, what is not. And that's where some good conversations come up on the next topic I'll talk about, alignment. So luckily, Long Hill is aligned with our novels. So the high school is changing a lot of their novels. And other districts are still holding on to some novels that, when Mr. Vee and I were there months ago, I'm like, wait a minute, I thought we got rid of this novel and we were supposed to, but others, you know, are still holding on to it for several reasons and different skills they want to teach. But that should be done by the end of this month, and our teachers are, have been going back to have further conversations about what novels to focus on at Central, starting in grade 6. And then based on that, we bring it down to K-5, which, we don't really have novels in fifth grade we do, but K-4 is, you know, more anthologies, some novel-based studies, but it's more heavily taught in grades 5 through 8.
And I have to add that the ELA teachers have been so open and receptive to this, it's just been great, really. Just want to compliment the staff on that.
Yes. So MTSS is the multi-tiered system of support. We are, we are spending time on it this year, but we have an excellent plan for next year. I sat in on a Zoom meeting this morning with Jerry, Melissa, and Jennifer, and two staff, two staff members, and it's very exciting what we have in store for us. So what this is, it's, it's a framework to give targeted support for struggling students. And this training, it's a three-year plan, and this training, its goal is to intervene very early, because if you really intervene very early, you can put modifications and interventions in to bring success to students that they just take with them as they get older, to the older grades, and school gets more difficult. It also screens students, which is initially why we brought in iReady as a universal screener. So it screens students and it aims at addressing academic and behavioral challenges that teachers and students may face. So next year, we are planning, pending on budget approval, obviously, to provide training to all teachers in how to teach interventions to all students. So it's no longer, this student is having difficulty, I've tried A, B, and C, now let's have an INRS meeting, or let's have a 504 meeting, we'll send the child to basic skills, see how he or she does. It's a more cohesive plan with all teachers, not just select individuals on the intervention team. So at the training today, I asked what, what are the difference between year one, year two, year three? And year one is really just to set the framework and the foundation for what this means, what the tiers look like, and I'll go into that in a moment, what it would look like for Long Hill. Year two is to form data teams, which we have, we don't really have formal data teams. We have our BSI teachers that constantly look at data, the principals. We look at data with our grade levels or with our team meetings at Central, but they're not really considered formal data teams. So year two is forming data teams that includes the learning, learning disabilities teacher consultant from the Child Study Team, special ed teachers, gen ed teachers, and our interventionists. And our principals will be a part of these. And she's going to teach us what to do, what to look for, and what do you do with all of this data that we receive from our universal screener, which is iReady, which we're slowly learning what to do this year, which is good. And then level three, oh, also level two, she reviews your district INRS process and provides suggestions on how to improve it and tighten it up a little bit. And then year three is really just providing maintenance for a multi-tiered system of support by also involving some social emotional learning components to our existing programs, bringing in additional assessments as, as she feels needed. And just so you know, the difference, the tiers, so we, it's tier 1 through 3. Tier 1 is very, students are still in the classroom receiving whole class instruction. In this tier, teachers are using their own classwork, they're modifying in their own way. They might take a student to the back table with another group of students to work on different skills that a student may be struggling with, but it's more whole class, it's more in the classroom as far as modifying student strengths and needs. And then each tier takes about six to eight weeks before we look at progress to see if a child has succeeded or not. If a child has not succeeded in tier 1, he or she moves up to tier 2, which is more smaller group intervention, so it's more students in the back table or front table, you know, in small group, or one-to-one modifying instruction, reteaching different concepts or skills. And it can also mean, you know, possibly a basic skills teacher pushing into a classroom to provide some type of academic support. And again, if a student is not making progress in tier 2, he or she then moves to tier 3, which is more intense individualized support. This could mean modifying small group work or individual lessons for students. This could mean still spending a lot of day in the general ed classroom, but also possibly leaving to go into a basic skills room for further, more targeted intervention. Okay? Then there's a process after that, which is what everyone will be trained on, on next steps. Any questions on this slide? Any questions on this slide?
Oh yeah, and let me just say here, for the technology support, we, when I discovered that, you know, talking with Jack and some members of the administrative team, as well as some of the board members, we were looking at some of the gaps in the one-to-one initiative. And we were able to adjust a few things and work with the business office to implement a one-to-one initiative that's basically on a three-year plan. But this year alone, we've already got the second graders on a one-to-one basis. And so from grades two through eight, we are fully one-to-one right now. And we've set our sights on Gillette. Gillette is using iPads for the kindergartners and first graders. And we have a budgeted amount in the next year's budget for about half the iPads. And then the following year, some more iPads. And then by the third year, we should have the full amount of one-to-one devices throughout, while maintaining, obviously, each year when we have to rotate some devices out. But we're in a good place right now with that, and we're moving forward. And then you want to talk a little bit about the supplemental programs that we currently have for our students?
Okay, our after-school program. We began this program one month earlier than years in the past. We started it in the middle of January, and we are going until we're concluding the week of March 18th. And this year, we did things a little differently. And I actually have a Zoom meeting with the teachers on Thursday to get their thoughts and feedback about how we did things. But informally, speaking with them, popping into some rooms, they liked it much better this year. They felt it was more structured. And what we did is we looked at the students that were assigned to their programs after school. We looked at their iReady data. And we formulated additional reporting groups, which is just really another class list. It's called a report group in the system. And we focused on certain skills. For math, it was geometry. And for reading, it was informational text and comprehension. Those are what we focused on this year, based on the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments that we received in the fall and the first diagnostic. So we taught whole class at first, some small group, and then broke away to work on our individual MyPath for these after-school classes. So based on the information that the teachers received, there were different lessons taught in those domains for the entirety of the after-school programs. What we're also doing is we are utilizing a pre-assessment and a post-assessment. And I've been working with iReady on how to assign the post-assessments to the students. So they'll be taking those the last week of the program. And then the teachers and I and the principals will look at it and see, how did we do? How did this, how did this program work? And monitor how the students did. So I'll have some of that information again after March 18th, obviously. We can figure out how we want to inform people on that, yes.
How many days, the after-school program, how many days in the week?
Two, two days per week.
Executive or they skip a day?
It was really based on teacher availability. So some Monday, Wednesday, but it was, or Tuesday, Thursday, yes. We have two, our two ELL, or multilingual teachers, taught one day per week. And then, or one day per week at Central. And then at Millington, she pushed into a few days a week.
And how long are the sessions?
One hour. You're welcome. And Summer Institute, we did not think we would have the funding for it for this coming summer, but we recently found out that we do. So we will be working on that over the next few weeks, and we will be sending out information soon on that.
We were really pleased with the additional state aid because the Summer Institute had previously been paid for with the ESAR funds. So when we got the additional state aid, we were able to make, make a few adjustments. And this is one of the things we're including this year.
Yes.
The after-school tutoring program and the Summer Institute, how is it determined which students are eligible to participate in those types of activities?
So for the after-school program, we took New Jersey Student Learning Assessments for the students who tested. And we took Diagnostic One from the beginning of the year. And then we obviously showed the list of students to the teachers, gained their input as well, but those are the basic measures. We also looked at Fanta-Simpinell levels for their reading levels at the instructional level. And then Summer Institute, we haven't discussed that criteria yet. But in the past, we have used Lincoln data, which was replaced with iReady. We also used Fanta-Simpinell scores. We used benchmarks from our math program. And we use New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. Years prior, we also used the Start Strong data, which we don't have anymore either. But I'm not sure if that's what we're going to use for this coming Summer Institute, but that's what we've done in the past.
One of the things that had come up was the effectiveness of the Summer Institute. Are we measuring that? Have we figured out how to measure it?
Yes, we have.
Okay, good.
Yes, and we've been reporting that to Student Achievement Committee, looking at students who, you know, didn't go over, students that did go. So we're, yes, we are doing that.
Wait, I'm sorry, can I ask another question going off of that? So is that going to be like individually, like you're going off of the individual student that, that went and attended the extended school year? Or are you just looking at like?
You mean ES, ESY? Extended School Year?
Yeah, are you looking at like student, you know, X, Y, Z, and their performance, or where they're at from the summer? Like, how did, how did that get met? Like, how did you find out the results?
For Summer Institute?
Yeah.
So we looked at the students who were invited, the students who attended versus not attended. And we were looking to see if there was any changes with the Diagnostic One. And then we're going to look at that for Diagnostic Two. And then we're looking at, you know, reasons why some students didn't attend. In years past, for Summer Institute, we had a large amount of students unable to attend due to prior commitments. So we invited the whole district and any student who wanted to attend. So that's how we're, that's how we've been measuring that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay, so here is a comparison of how we did in each school for reading and mathematics in the fall, Diagnostic One, and in the winter, Diagnostic Two. In the fall, Millington and Gillette, Millington and Central took the assessments in very, last two weeks, September, first week in October. Gillette, we, we had to share the devices. And they have little fingers, so we didn't finish until the first week in November. And we took the second assessment, the end of January, beginning of February. Okay, for all of the schools. We were pros at it by, by February. So this is just a background. It's an online program that we use for reading and mathematics. We use it for the diagnostic assessment, originally for the universal screener. And then we received so much information from it that we were lucky to purchase the actual program that goes with it, where you can assign lessons through the MyPath. Teachers can assign teacher-directed lessons, and students can just pick up and practice, which that will also be on my letter for parents, so that there's a consistent message from the district that we highly suggest nicely for you to practice at home, or for your children to practice at home. But that'll be coming out in my letter as well. It consists of, as I just said, diagnostic assessment, personalized instruction. And the purpose is to support individual student growth. Not really comparing how they do with their peers. It's how you compare to yourself and how you progress and improve throughout the year. And then the instructional component provides students with lessons, and that's called MyPath, that is individually based on their skill level and their needs. And then they just move up along. So we've had some parents ask why there are games involved. That's actually timed by iReady. So they feel that when a student has been on for, let's say, 20 minutes, it's time for a brain break, and they get to move around, and they get to, their eyes move around a little bit. So that's nothing we can really change. That's actually, happens during the diagnostic in school too. If a student is, is not even taking a long time, but reading a lot, then you get your brain break. And also, for kindergarten, the tests are read to you from the computer. All of the assess, all of the diagnostics, first grade, they are not. Even though they have a voice button, the students were touching it and nothing. I'm like, well, it's not working. They're like, we can't hear it. I'm like, well, because you're not going to. You're old enough now, right? We don't, we don't read it to you right now. So from one through eight, they read it on their own. And these are the areas that are tested in. So I just made that correlation before with the science of reading. It's similar to what we test for, for reading and math. The only differences are high-frequency words for reading. And for math, it's, it's the same. And it's really geared towards the standards as well. And this is what it looks like when, you'll see it in Genesis. And when we look at it through the system. So the top green, mid or above level is that dark color, but it has black lines through the circle. Next is a lighter green color. The one in the middle is supposed to be yellow, but you couldn't really read it when I, I put it on here. So it's, it's that yellow score that means you're one grade below. The red is two grades below. And then three or more grades below is dark red with black lines in it. So that's how it's differentiated in the system when we look at it and when parents will see it at home. Or through the parent portal. Okay, so here is, I started with Gillette, this is reading. The top line is the recent diagnostic, how we performed the first week in February as compared to how we performed the first week in November. And there was some growth. I do have a summary page after each of these, so I'll just leave it up here for a moment, so you can take a look at it. And the, it's not, in this slide right here, it's not broken up on top, K in one. It's the whole school. So it should be 186, right, I think, 171 students. That's how they calculated those, those top lines. But when you look in the portal, you'll be able to see your individual child. And then at the bottom, you can see it's broken up by domain and the colors that I had just discussed by grade level. So of course, what you want to see is more green, less yellow, and less red as we take the different diagnostics. And then this is math, same format as reading.
I have a question. So ideally, the, all of the students that are in yellow, the idea is hopefully at the end of the year?
To be green.
To be green?
Yes. Okay, so to summarize, for Gillette, for the fall, we had 30% of students in green, and this is for both green categories. 67% in yellow and 3% in red. And then for the winter, we had 70% students in green, both greens combined. 27% in yellow and 2% in red. And then for math, 20% in green in the fall, 77% in yellow, 4% in red. And then in the winter, 38% green, 58% yellow, and 3% in red. And then I have on the last slide, towards the end, some improvements that are still needed and some areas that we did well, well in. Yes.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So the children that are in red?
Yes.
I understand this is diagnostic tool, but are they, since they have been now, you know, either newly identified or probably already? I guess my question is, are they already receiving services, right? Or some type of help?
Yes, yes, they may have, they may be in a basic skills group. They might be identified as like a tier one or two student. They may, yes, they are.
On, on the other side of that, for the students that were in green or are two, mid or above grade level, any additional services for those students?
Yes, so it's, that's interesting, because the second diagnostic, we had students that I recall at Central that had tested out. So the teachers were emailing me, what do I do? And I'm like, I don't know, let me find out. So I reached out to iReady, and I said, what do you do with students who have tested out? Do you have additional lessons for them? And they did, luckily. So, but we had to ask for them. So any student that have tested out, now a button was clicked in the admin dashboard, where all students that have tested out can now be further challenged as well.
Great.
Yes. Okay, so here is Millington reading, again, same format as Gillette. The top row is from the winter, the bottom is from the fall. And again, it's the whole grade level up top, broken down into individual grades. This is a snapshot of what you're really able to see in the system, though. But I thought this was the best way to present how the students did.
Is it just me, or does it appear that almost all of these grades have gotten from more of an average to very good and very bad?
Like, we're seeing, like, what Tom, I think, is saying, we're seeing a lot more truly green and a lot more yellow-red at the same time. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes. Do you find, do you think that's the case, Dr. Jones? It's hard, I guess it's hard from our seat to see the percentages, so I don't know if that would be.
It's also, I, I think when we're looking at grades two through five versus grades K through one, it's difficult for a child to be three years behind in grades one. So there's some of that as well, you know?
That's a good point, yeah.
That, you, and it, I, I don't know if it's as difficult for kids to be three years ahead in grade one. But so some of these scores, you'll notice, it's, it's as the year progresses and the age progresses that there's some factors specific to the age, I think, that show up in the data.
But, or.
We talked about this in student achievement, this whole presentation.
You can see that as they're getting older, they're falling more and more behind.
Yeah.
So... Maybe let's see the summary page, Dr. Jones, that could be helpful.
We shouldn't make the assumption that it's the same students.
That's fair.
Yes, that's also another.
You know, all of a sudden, they get to a certain level, then they start to regress a little bit, whereas somebody was like low, they were able to move up, you know what I mean? So it's not the same pool all the time.
That is correct. Well, no, you're measuring the same pool of students in, in, in each category, right? You're just measuring them at different times of the year.
Right. Well, the diagnostic, well, it's, it's different, so that's, that's correct. But Diagnostic One is on what you have not learned yet. Diagnostic Two is what has been covered, but also new topics that you have not learned yet. And then the last diagnostic, I think, will be the one that really sums it up, because it's what you have learned all year. Okay, this is math.
Why don't you move to the percentages? Because it, it is hard to see that red shade in the fall. And so it looks like yellow, but it's really red. So here you can tell the numbers.
So here, yes. Here are the percentages for fall, 52% green, and this is reading. 35% yellow, 12% red. And then in the winter, 73% green, 21% yellow, and 5% red. And then for math, in the fall, was 33% green, 54% yellow, 13% red. And in the, excuse me, in the winter, 55% green, 38% yellow, and 6% red.
Yeah, so, so in both cases, the, both reading and math, the, the red decreased by, by a half, right? From 12% to five, and 13% to 6%.
But I do think to my point, and I can just speak to my experience as a parent, sometimes learning struggles weren't resolved for my kids in one year. And so, you know, I, I also know from friends as well, if a student is working in, with an interventionist or with the special education department, yes, you, you can fall behind. But that's as they're remediating you in the skills that that student needs to learn. Not saying that's true for every child, but you do see gaps in learning that then are, I think, as Dr. Jones was saying, the students are being, you know, targeted with the assessments, I'm sorry, the instruction that they need for their learning style. So sometimes it's these assessments that call attention to the learning needs for students.
Good point.
Yes, yes, that's correct. We did, we talked about that. Okay, and here is Central School for Reading. Okay, and here is Central School for Reading.
I mean, it seemed, you know, we had gotten the presentation ahead of time. This concerned me a little bit. When we said longer the grade. So does that say that there is something missing before Central?
I mean, it can. It's, there's a lot to look at. So we're not really ruling anything out.
Is this concert, is this something that is concerning that there are, when it comes to reading in the middle school, that we're seeing, I guess, you know, again, it's kind of blends together, but we're seeing such higher percentages falling behind in reading?
I mean, yes. I also think it correlates with how some students performed with the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. So I was saying in the beginning, the beginning of the year, with the first diagnostic to the Student Achievement Committee, and this may not make sense the way I'm saying it, but I was not happy, but I was relieved to see that, not a lot of red, obviously, but that it was all in the area of comprehension or all in the area of geometry for math. Because if it was all over the place and there was inconsistency, that would have been more alarming to me. Not saying that I'm pleased, but it's consistent with what we have seen, which I'm hopeful that what we've been doing with iReady and some of the training with the teachers will work. That's why we also tried something different with the after-school tutoring classes this year to maybe see if this is also something that can work. And then when they take the diagnostic in May, you know, I'm hoping we'll see, you know, significant results in that area, specifically the red and the yellow areas. So I think that would be more telling data for us. But of course, when you see, you know, 12, I think it's 12, 13%, actually 20%, yes.
That are how many, that that last category was, that are how many grade levels behind?
Red, the first red is two or more. The red with the black lines through it could be three or more.
So in other words, in...
So 7% is two grade levels. And 13% for the last one I'm looking at, actually they're the same, are three or more levels behind.
So we're saying, in other words, 13% of... My eyes are terrible, sorry. So 13% of grade...
Six, seven and eight.
Are actually on a grade three level?
Not grade three, just three levels behind in the iReady levels. So it's not saying grade three, but it's three levels.
So the levels don't correspond with the grade?
Not necessarily.
So then what does that...
So it might be like mid-third grade, end of third grade. Like, so it is, three levels is third grade, but a beginning, mid or end. If that makes sense.
Yeah, so there's about, say, I can't see that, but maybe 13% of sixth graders are somewhere in the third grade level.
According to the diagnostic two, yes.
So, Dr. Jones, I really appreciate this in like this, like high-level lens of like what's happening, like especially at the middle school. Like I think obviously, we all have some questions around the middle school and that movement from fifth to sixth is such a huge jump. So I assume, right, that we're taking this data and we're looking at those fourth and fifth grade standards and where students are missing in sixth grade and applying that tier one universal level at the fourth and fifth grade to see where these students may be missing these concepts and then where within our curriculum, we can enter those in and infuse that support in across the board in fourth and fifth to kind of bolster that. Would I be right in that assumption?
Yes, so we are having those conversations. We're utilizing Curriculum Mondays for that. I have that on a future slide that I'll talk about. But yes, and it could be teaching different concepts more towards the end of the year as opposed to the beginning of the year. We're also doing that for reading as well. And so what we're, you know, what we're targeting or what we're measuring on the report cards. There's a lot of cross-curricular articulation that we are having this year based on what we're noticing with year two of the Standards-Based Report Cards at the K-5 level and also based on these assessments.
Just a question and a follow-up maybe. When you talked about some communication to parents, will they see the color associated with their student?
Yes.
And then my follow-up question is the, or maybe it's just a statement, the nuanced communication behind that, that parents will need to get? What does that, conceptually, what does that look like?
So I'm going to just type up a letter explaining what it is that you're going to see, verbatim, what it means. And in the parent letter from the system, it gives you some suggestions at home that you can do and, you know, really what it means. And so it's very detailed. We looked at a sample at our admin meeting last week. It's very detailed. So I think it'll be a lot better than my letter. That went out.
I think you should be prepared. I mean, if a parent gets something and it shows up that their kid is in that dark red with a lot of black lines, you're gonna get a lot of calls. But really, I mean, don't think it's gonna happen.
Dr. Jones, if I could jump in on that?
Sure.
Because it kind of paired with my question. One of the reasons I think that we put this program in place, I wasn't sure if it was clear to everyone on the board because we've discussed it at Student Achievement, but was what you were talking about on the first slide, that we had identified some of these issues through the previous testing. And so that moving towards this program is a tool for, it is a tool for the district to communicate further with parents as we go along, rather than being surprised at the end of the year with the testing coming into place.
Right.
And then that first slide you were talking about with all the interventions, our interventions we've put in place to help address the issues that we're seeing come up through the scores.
That's correct. Yes.
I understand that a letter is going out to parents that explain everything, but especially for those children in the really dark red categories, is anyone going to be reaching out to the parents to address the type of concern there is for their child? Or are the parents expected to... My concern is some parents might not understand the significance of it or might not be able to take the time to really understand what they're looking at because you're explaining it to us, which is extremely helpful, but I, it just might be confusing for some parents.
No, that's a good point. I would like to think if you, if a child is still that behind, that conversations have already been had, but I can definitely check with the principals on that.
That's what I was gonna say.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Yes. They were, right, they were invited to the after-school classes.
But I'm gonna answer that, though. That's what I was gonna say. They likely were already identified for tutoring for this year. And I doubt the movement. They probably were already invited to Summer Institute and even tutoring last year based on if they're in the deep red category. However, we had a lot of parents, I think, in Central turn down tutoring.
Yes, they did.
So hopefully, this is like, the continuity of this will now say that, listen, if you are turning down tutoring and we're showing you the data is repeating here, hopefully they'll be open to either doing the tutoring or the Summer Institute and obviously participating in the other things that Dr. Jones already mentioned. But I will say, I've seen the iReady report and it's very, it's very easy to understand and it lays everything out very personalized for your child. So I think there won't be, there may be questions, but I think it gives a lot of information.
Okay, and this is math for Central as well, fall and winter. Okay, and the summary for Central, in the fall for reading, 57% of students were in both green categories. 22% of students were in yellow and 20% of students in red. And in the winter, 65% of students were in green, 15% of students were in yellow and 20% still in red. And then for math, for the fall, 40% of students were in green, 40% in yellow and 21% in red. And then in the winter, 51% green, 33% yellow and 17% red.
So if I read that correctly, winter math diagnostics, you have almost half the group that is below average, below passing?
Yes.
And we say what to them?
What was that?
And we say what to them?
Well, I'll talk to you about that. So this is what we're doing. So a lot of the students were already invited to the after-school program. We do have the math instructional class at Central that takes place all year anyway, or in addition to this. We have teachers reviewing the data for Diagnostic One and Two for instructional purposes. This is happening during grade level meetings, team meetings at the middle school. We're sharing different teaching strategies. We're looking for trends to see if it's a grade level concern, if it's just, you know, certain students, you know, concerning, maybe new students that move in, you know, several different factors. We are making, we are making improvements that we've noticed based on teachers looking at the data and across the board for reading, phonological awareness, phonics and high-frequency words. And there was growth in vocabulary since the beginning of the year. Overall, we still need improvement in comprehension and informational text. For mathematics, we saw improvement in numbers and operations, which is actually one of the areas we were focusing on with the after-school classes. Measurement and data, algebra, algebraic thinking. And we are still showing that we need improvement in the area of geometry that we identified with the first diagnostic that matched with the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. In K through two, the teachers are comparing this data to see if there is a correlation between the DIBELS assessments, which is a phonemic awareness assessment, to see if some of the students in yellow and red also scored in yellow and red in these assessments. And what are we doing with these students in the classroom? It's small group instruction. It's BSI push-in or BSI pull-out. And it's teachers working one-on-one with the students on specific skills that they need. We are constantly having BSI conversations, monthly meetings, reviewing students to see, can students exit? Are students here all year? Should they be here all year? How can we move students in and out? And what are, really what our process and procedures are for basic skills. We do have a nice intervention program that we've put into place this year based on significant training that the teachers received last year. That has been very beneficial. So we are constantly, it's a very fluid program with the teachers and the students. I just talked a little bit about the after-school classes, how they began sooner based on the results of the fall diagnostic for both reading and math. We continue professional development with iReady for staff, which has been very beneficial on, there's a lot of data. Now what do we do with it? So we just break it down step by step. And then we will have the Summer Institute, which will also narrow down the students that are in that yellow and red categories for further targeted instruction after the school year. So it's not really just a one and done. And we're still looking for ways to provide interventions. And based on, from recent meetings that I've heard about and the one I attended today with the multi-tiered system of support, I think this may also be a tool that will help the students, all students, but specifically students that are struggling that are in that red category that have not shown the growth from Diagnostic One to Two.
Dr. Jones, when do the notices plan to go out for Summer Institute? And I ask as a parent who's like knee-deep in summer camps and everybody needs your money now and just for parents to have that information.
Well, we just found out within the last few days, right, that we had the funds to do this. So I'm not sure on that timeline right now, but maybe...
Yeah, no, we're gonna have to coordinate it as soon as we can.
Okay, and then we can let you know. Okay.
Okay, yeah, and so we moved to the second goal, which is engaging the school community and all stakeholders in excellence in education. And one of the things that we've talked about before is our, which is in progress, is the new website that we're moving to, which is going to be a much more user-friendly platform. It's gonna allow us to share news much more easily. And we're also going to be able to have it an easier experience internally for using the website and posting things. And it also will be uniform throughout the district at all the different schools. And by the same token, we're looking to unify our communications, both how the messages are communicated and shared among the schools with parents and the community. And even the look and feel of the communications is gonna be similar and more uniform going forward. We're gonna get that started soon and move and do that in coordination with the rollout of the website. Another way, we are also providing services for families that need translation during meetings or interacting with the website or Google Classroom. We've been collaborating with the PTO and the LHF. Both groups have been phenomenal in terms of the support of our schools. And we try to help them as much as we can getting messages out and helping to support their programs so that they can support our kids. And we also have, I've had, we've all had an excellent experience with the police department in terms of their responsiveness to us and their help and assistance whenever we need it. They're here on campus for arrival. They're on campus for dismissals. They take walkthroughs through the buildings. Just very responsive to whatever we have a concern. So that part has been great. And then I want to turn it over to Lori for the parent volunteer involvement.
Okay, also something that I forgot to mention for iReady, and I'm not banking all of our needs of improvement through iReady, but it will be available all summer long to students based on the contract that we have with them so they can utilize it over the summer as well, not to lose any skills. But of course, I'm not expecting major growth over what they're doing over the summer at home. Okay, parent volunteer involvement. We just last week had a lot of parent volunteers in as guest readers for Read Across America. We had Family Reading Night at Gillette at the Last Bullet. We had over 100 families attend, which was great. We have food days where parents are in at Central every day, at Millington four days a week and at Gillette two days a week. We have library volunteers coming in at Millington and Gillette on a weekly basis. We have mystery readers on a weekly basis coming into Gillette. We have the Holiday Shop at Gillette as well. That takes place in December. We have a lot of, or the end of November. We have a lot of volunteers that help run this. Book fair in the schools. First grade has our dance residency again. We have parent volunteers through the Cultural Arts Committee of the PTO. And then we have a parent performance. They help with our dress rehearsal. So that's a nice opportunity to have parents come in. We also invite, I didn't put it up here, but for residencies, any concerts that we have, we do invite the senior center as well. And we, a lot of the times, they'll come into our school or in recent years, we'll perform for them in the parking lot, which has been really nice. And we always trick-or-treat in there, too. Except this year, they came outside for us. So we do involve the seniors as well, which isn't parent involvement, but I think it's a nice involvement. PTO grade level events that take place throughout all of the schools. We have Field Day in our elementary schools and, like I said, Family Reading Night as well. Okay, this was me, right?
That's true.
Okay, we also, okay, so we have some senior center support that we have from Central students, from the Community Service Club. They cooked meals for the Long Hill first responders. They collected 12 baskets for our food pantry. And they collect for Market Street Mission. We have a partnership with Watchong Hills High School. So ninth grade students came down to eighth grade. It's really a way of ensuring for a smooth transition. Kind of going over some strategies from ninth grade students on transition. And it just continues to build on the relationship that we have at the high school and just make it stronger amongst the students and the staff. And the Director of Guidance and I are currently working with students at Watchong Hills High School, particularly at the end of the day, to come to Gillette classes, all 10 classrooms for K-1. And with the guidance of the teachers, they are providing assistance to the students. So they may read a book to a group of students while the teacher is working with another group of students. And this is to essentially help at that small group instruction time. So the younger students are managed with not just go to centers and then the teachers pausing the group, speaking to the... and then the teachers pausing the group, speaking to this one, speaking to that one. It's more facilitated, more structured, and there is additional help in the classroom. So we are currently working on a schedule with the high school that will start after spring break. So that should be something exciting and something new that we'll have for Gillette.
So that's just for Gillette, not Millington?
Right, right.
Okay, yeah, and so the third goal is about aligning the instructional spaces so they support innovative teaching and learning. And again, the goal being to create spaces for inquiry, collaboration, problem-solving, and innovation. This summer, we had the Central Steam Room renovated. That's still a few final punch-list items there. But what we've set our sights on is for next year. The, one we're in the budget, we have a steam teacher. But we also have equipment that we will need to purchase to outfit that, the steam lab. That's something we're very excited about. We had the Gillette kindergarten room that was done over the summer. We've identified some issues with the carpet in the Gillette Media Center. And through a careful allocation of resources, we're able to put new flooring there, and that's gonna take place over spring break. And we're also have been planning, I guess it was a year and a half or two years ago, that the, there were upgrades made to the flooring over at the Millington Media Center. But the next step with the furniture never took place, so we have been planning for that. And that will be taking place this summer in the 2024-25 budget. And we've also identified this large instructional space, which is an outdated technology room at Central Middle School, which will be renovated this summer as we move forward. And the one-to-one technology plan also is, is in the budget and is gonna be helpful to setting the right conditions for this kind of learning environment. Okay, and at the same time, we're looking for additional cost-saving opportunities. We were about, three months ago, we received a tuition-paying student from Somerset Hills, which has added to the, the tuition that we received from Greenbrook for a current student. We have both of those in the budget for next year. But we have two new shared services opportunities currently under consideration. One is to have the extended school year here in Long Hill, but to have the Watchong Borough students participate in it, and the costs will be shared with Watchong Borough. We're working on the details of that right now. And then also the Chinese language after-school opportunity with Hudson Way Immersion School, which we've talked about, but also allowing those students to come and be in the sixth-grade science class. We've also entered into conversations about ways that we could receive some financial resources from Hudson Immersion School in order to pay for those, those students in the science class. So we're looking into that right now.
Okay, promoting an inclusive school community where all students feel a sense that they belong and they can thrive in every way. So the special education philosophy is that all students should be educated in the least restrictive environment. They should have access to their general education peers to the maximum extent possible while also meeting their educational individual needs. Okay, we have monthly celebrations honoring cultural groups. So just for example, we had Hispanic Heritage Month that took place in the fall in all the schools. We have Black History Month that took place this winter. Women's History Month that took, that's taking place now. We have holidays around the world that focuses on other cultural groups that we may not, you know, dedicate a certain timeframe in the school year, but that are taught throughout. So it's not, you know, just one time a month. And where, that's another opportunity for parent volunteers to come in and discuss their cultural backgrounds and their holidays they celebrate. We have, in the classroom, we have examples of timeline, timelines of lives of famous people of all different cultural backgrounds and how they contributed positively to our country. We have books that we read in the classroom and in the library focusing on different cultural, culture and different heritage throughout the school year. We also have classroom projects. I know even the younger students made a quilt based on different quotes and sayings throughout the year. And we also tie a lot of this into music, art, and library with different lessons that take place throughout the year with our specialists. Okay, our SCL program, Social Emotional Learning. We have the Choose Love curriculum with activities and lessons that is really focused on various monthly activities taught by the Guidance Counselor of, of the schools, and then followed up with classroom lessons from classroom teachers. These programs relate to the social emotional learning and development of all students and how to be inclusive of all of us. We also have part of October lessons there. It's a lot in October. It's Week of Respect, School Violence Awareness Week, which for the younger ones, we call it Peace in Our Schools Week, and Red Ribbon Week, which is promoting healthy choices. So each, each school hosts different activities, depending on the ages of the students, that are relevant to their ages. There are themed weeks that focus on being respectful, being kind citizens who support their learning environment, their relationship with their peers, respecting our community, making healthy choices. And we also have monthly character-ed lessons from the Guidance Counselor, who also shares lessons to the classroom teachers to follow up in the classroom. And we have tiger team assemblies at the K-five level run by the Guidance Counselors, just nominating and awarding students for acts, random acts of kindness based on the pillars that we have in the schools. And students can be nominated by any adult in the building, which has been nice. Okay, for digital citizenship, this year we had a fall assembly for Central titled My Life Online, which focused on how we treat others in person, online, making good decisions, and being the best version of ourselves. We also spoke about, well, I'll, I'll skip over the next one only to continue with our digital citizenship for Grade Five. It was an in-person assembly led by Ms. Becker and Mrs. Dawson. It's really, it teaches you to be mindful of what you post because you have a digital footprint that follows you everywhere. So you can think you're erasing what you want, but you never really erase anything. So they were taught, be respectful. Before you post, think about how it will impact, who will be reading it, who will be receiving it. Have a positive relationship with your peers, and respect yourself and respect your peers. So, jumping back to the Holocaust survivor speaker, this year it was, I, I actually really enjoyed it because the day before the speaker came in, I had a lesson that I observed from Mr. Gillespie. And it was all about the speaker and her life, and it was amazing. And just to see the students' reactions, like how quiet they were at some parts of the film, how some eyes were very watery when they were seeing and hearing things that, that took place. And it was, you know, it was excellent for me, not based on the topic, but to see how it was taught and how the reaction of the students were. Sort of follow-up with the speaker from the lesson that I observed was, was excellent. It was just a, a great experience for the students, in my opinion. We have Mrs. Anderson, our multilingual learning teacher, who has been providing this year, the next one is March 25th at our Curriculum Monday, strategies for all classroom teachers on how to teach students who, English is not their first language, and how to help them in the classroom to make them feel comfortable, to understand what everyone is learning. So she has done an excellent job in training many teachers so far. We have our last set of teachers that are going to be trained at the end of this month. And for the first time ever, which was the idea of Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Pischiati at Gillette for our Family Reading Night, we had one session where Mrs. Anderson read an English version and Mrs. Pischiati read the Spanish version. We also sent flyers home to the non-English-speaking families, personally inviting them to come to this event because we were doing things a little differently. And it was great. It, it was really nice to see everybody there and all the students there. And I sat in on one of the sessions because sometimes I miss learning. So it was nice to hear the, the book being read in a different language for me personally as well. So that was a great idea those two teachers had, and I'm sure we'll continue that, yes.
Excuse me, did you send any flyers home to the English-speaking families?
Yes.
This might be a cultural awareness for you as well?
Oh, yes, well, we sent individual ones home as a reminder. And we sent, it goes out on my Friday Focus. So that went out to all families a few times. It's also posted in the Gillette Monthly Calendar, and then teachers also sent that out, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I attended as well with my children, and they loved it. So it was, it was nice going to all the rooms, and I was able to, to witness that, and that was just lovely to see.
Yeah.
Okay, and so we'll do an end-of-the-year update on progress toward district goals. I think the iReady results will come into clearer focus too, in terms of the color-coded keys. Because as Lori mentioned, we're looking at standards that are set for the end of the year, and we can see what kind of progress we've made. We'll also be able to see how some of these interventions are working and what interventions we need to perhaps start the year with or work on over the summer. But I, I think it's just kind of helping us see where certain gaps are and how we can help our students learn and grow.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Communications, Mr. Alexis.
Okay, as the board members know, we received a couple of messages about preschool when the results of the lottery came out, and there was some disappointment involved. There was a follow-up meeting with one family that took place last week. But right now, we're looking into, we continue to look into ways that perhaps we can expand access to preschool for our community and whether we can obtain state aid. That's gonna take a little bit of time to get a better sense of whether we can do this. And I don't see it as happening in, I can't say it's gonna happen next year. It's probably a longer-range kind of project. But in the meantime, we've talked a lot about making sure parents and families know the expectations, how many spots are available. And, you know, we don't want to, you know, all the families that think they're going to get a spot or that they're going to get a spot because they have a child in the program, because we have a lot of families with children in the program that were also entering the lottery again. So it, it's unfortunate, but we're gonna be more mindful of that in terms of communicating with, with our community. As the board members also know, we received an anonymous email and then a follow-up to that anonymous email anonymously. As a matter of practice, we do not respond to anonymous emails and ask that any parent who is concerned about the experience their child is having in a class, that they go through the proper channels and that they, and the chain of command, and beginning with the teacher. And that's it for Communications.
Thank you. Committee and Liaison Reports, let's start with Karen.
On February 14th, I attended a virtual meeting where the Ed Services Commission. Basically, it's nothing of great import to us, except that it was brought up, and maybe people know that there's legislation to move the Board of Elections for the elections back to April. And the two sides, I mean, the two biggest things that's come out is the one moving back to April because the November election has put too much politics into the election process. Having it in April though, the contention is, you always low votes, you don't know if you get a respective representation of what the real town or the population wants. But it's out there, so, just so that you know that. Finance met last week. Anything associated with the budget, Robin will cover in her presentation. You should have all gotten your copy of the preliminary and the schedule, so that's good. And any questions that you have, please get them to George. We're gonna be meeting again this Wednesday. Go over the questions, finalize any little nits and butts about the budget. And come next Monday, we'll be voting on the preliminary budget, tentative budget, I should say. On the agenda, you're gonna see there's some resolutions. Two dealing with a parent transportation contract. One is to rescind a contract, and then the next one is to approve a new contract. The, the money was renegotiated. And then, there's a resolution on the agenda dealing with our rod grants, which we need to do to be able to get the contract so that we can get the final awards. And the bills were reviewed and approved. And as far as governance goes, we met. And we did a review of the board timeline as supplied by the New Jersey School Boards, as well as what we had. And we did a line-by-line comparison, you know, we're gonna change this, move that. And in a follow-up with Charlene, what she did was provide an example or two of what other boards have done on their timeline. And we're gonna be discussing that at the next governance meeting, which is coming up next Wednesday. Because there were one or two ideas on other timelines which would be beneficial for us. You all should have gotten the note on the schedule for the CSA evaluations and self-evaluations. And, you know, it's coming up, all right, so everybody knows that. We talked about the, in our November goal review, we're gonna have a one-half hour training session prior to the start of our goal review. So we talked about the training, what that will be, and it'll be Charlene giving that. And then, there was, well, we'll, we'll really be hearing about it this coming meeting. But work was done and completed on the mission-vision work out of the Central School students. That hadn't come for that meeting, but we're gonna hear about it in the next one. And that's it.
Great, any questions for Karen? Crystal?
Nothing for this month, but Dr. Jones, I wanna say thank you so much, and Mr. Alexis, for the comprehensive progress towards the board goals. I appreciate it, it was incredibly helpful, thank you.
Yeah, next time we have to give you time, or you should not have to stand that long, but I guess you're, you're-
Right, to your chair.
As a teacher, yeah, I mean, yeah, but thank you, yes, okay, great. Danielle?
Yes, so as far as communication with the PTO, the only thing I have is that the food days is going to be, it was extended till tonight, till midnight.
I mean, people was, that's never happened in all my-
That's huge, yeah. There was some kind of glitch with an email that was for the reminder, it did never went out, and a lot of people depend on that.
You missed it, you're seen.
So if you missed it, you have, if you're watching it, you're in luck. You have till midnight tonight to, to go ahead and do that. And then as for Community Relations Committee, we met via Zoom on February 20th. All attendance was myself, Mr. Alexis, Kim Case, Justin Foster, Tom Grosskopf. And we spoke with the Sterling Street Fair. It's coming up on April 21st. Just a note, a sign-up will, a sign-up sheet will be going out to everybody, and I'm hoping if everyone's around that we can, can all at least partake in a, a time slot. I guess we can't have more than four of us at, at the same time. But that will, will be going out. And also, let me see here. We're gonna have like a jar of candy, and we'll, we'll guess, and there'll be a winner, and they get a prize. We'll have brochure out, you know, for the Board of Ed and what we do and that kind of thing. We discussed also having a QR code that Jack could assist with, hopefully, so that it would take them to like the, the budget presentation. We also spoke about showcasing students' artwork and projects in Town Hall or the library, or possibly other local businesses. So stay tuned, that will be coming soon, hopefully. Our next meeting is tomorrow at 12:00 PM Zoom, and we'll be tying up more, you know, last-minute loose ends for the fair. And that's about it.
Okay, any questions for Danielle? Anne?
Student Achievement and Curriculum Committee met last week on March 5th. We discussed in detail the information that Dr. Jones and Mr. Alexis presented tonight. As you know from committee updates throughout this year, one key focus of the committee's work is focusing on the supports and intervention that the district is putting in place to support our students and encourage their academic growth. It's an important ongoing conversation. And just please know to reach out to me and the committee with any questions you have for us or for the committee. And thank you to Dr. Jones and Mr. Alexis for your presentation. And also, we discussed at the meeting the preschool capacity and the potential for the program in the future, as Mr. Alexis had shared in his report.
Great.
Oh, our next meeting is April 9th. We tend to meet the week before the board meetings, so.
Any questions for Anne? Okay, Tom?
Yes. The Technology Committee met on-
Yes, uh, the Technology Committee met on, uh, the 8th, 2:00 PM Google Meet. It was myself, Mr. Alexis, Anne Butler, Justin Foster, and the great Jack Hartnett. If it wasn't for Jack, we'd be, I'd be gone. We talked about his, uh, five, what, the five-year, uh, plan cycle for addressing, uh, life cycles of equipment, and also increases in software licensing costs, and how that's going. Uh, the one-to-one program, uh, for Chromebooks, as you heard earlier, for Grade Two, is now completely, is, is deployed, Millington is now completely one-to-one. Gillette one-to-one iPad per, uh, plan, the Gillette School is on track to have 100 devices, split between five charging carts to start the 24-25 school year. On track to have the entire district one-to-one by the start of the 26-27 school year. The Technology Department is reviewing options to reallocate current devices, and provide staff with a more powerful mobile device with a larger screen. I think we talked about that last, uh, last meeting as well. Uh, there's a new website platform called Final Site, formerly it was School Messenger. The new vendor, vendor is a bit more expensive, in the magnitude of a few thousand dollars. The cost difference is expected to be reduced over time. However, it's, it's modern responsive website designed with a mobile-first approach, as opposed, those of us who live and die by the iPhone, it doesn't always work, you have to go to the, to a website. So this actually is much better for that. Modern design, website features, mobile integrated directory, built-in accessibility tools, social media integrations, uh, easy-to-learn platform from office staff mirrors, drag-and-drop interface. Final Site will be providing trading for staff, and also assisting with content migration. The phone system's been improved, consolidated the backend phone system to a single vendor, Hunter Technologies. I think we talked about that at last meeting, but we never actually, I don't know if we revealed who it was, so, it is they. Interface between former systems equated to system sprawl. Consolidation offers improved service and outage repair. If a line goes down on the valley road, it's backed up through the Wi-Fi, is that not correct, Jack? And so, we're, we're never without contact to the outside world. The old days of the phone going down, and you're, that's it, over. Uh, there's LTE backup, there we go, for the phone system currently installed and functioning. Uh, but we'll be improving the functionality by installing an antenna on the roof of Gillette School, working together with B&amp;G, building a ground to accomplish, to accomplish this installation, can't see a problem there. Ongoing infrastructure improvements. Recently installed new enclosed network racks in each school building. Enclosed, meaning nobody can put their grimy little fingers in it and mess something up. And I don't mean the children. Improved battery backups have been installed in Central Middle School, Millington, and Gillette to follow. Cybersecurity, the, a lot of letters there, I'm not gonna read them all, NJ something about it. State and local cybersecurity grant program, grant awards services, not a dollar amount. Uh, Jack informs us that we, we, we have been informed that we are receiving cybersecurity risk assessment of our environment, cybersecurity policies to implement, cybersecurity training for IT personnel, and security aware, awareness training for staff, Jack and Andrew. For the good of the order, uh, Mr. Foster here asked for the, uh, that the, uh, asked that the change from School Messenger to Final Site to be quantified and qualified. And Jack has agreed to give us that answer in the next, next meeting. And, uh, we also discussed about AI, AI is on, AI is on the radar, but is not imminent for us. And that is all we have, and I have nothing from the planning board. And that's all there is today.
Okay, any questions for Tom? Okay, great, Justin?
Uh, just two acknowledgements, just Friday was International Women's Day. Sparked inclusion was the theme, which maps to our district goals, and, um, yesterday was start of Ramadan.
Great, thank you. Melissa?
Um, we had our policy committee meeting on, uh, February 13th at 8:00 PM, and, um, it's self-explanatory, I'm not gonna go through all the changes in the policy, there weren't any major changes made. However, I do thank Tom for his communication that he sent to me prior to today's meeting regarding a, um, policy that we have on for first reading today, and that is a smoking prohibition policy. Tom, um, uh, asked that we include, uh, tobacco, I mean, I'm sorry, marijuana in addition to the tobacco. I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm going to look into it, we have another policy meeting tomorrow. We do have a policy that allows the use of medical marijuana, well, the administration of medical marijuana. So I just wanna ensure that, uh, what we're doing aligns with the rest of our policies, and as well as the state law that allows for the administration of, uh, medical marijuana. So thank you for that communication, and for actually reading the policies. And, um, we have another policy meeting tomorrow night, I sent out the, the agenda today. And that is tomorrow night at 8:00 PM.
Thank you, any questions for Melissa? Okay, I'm gonna try and do justice to buildings and grounds. Um, I'm not usually the note-taker, but I will try. We met on, uh, March 5th, it was myself, Tom, Adele, Frank, uh, and Mr. Alexis. Um, I'm gonna go through some of the items, we're, we discussed the infield renovations, um, we're waiting on spring touch-ups, and those will be done by the 20th of this month. Uh, Gillette School Room 20 is scheduled to be, um, done on, for spring break. Um, the Gillette Library floor replacement, they're putting down new tile, and this will be done when teachers, uh, by the time teachers return, and I assume students from spring break. Uh, Millington Room, um, 18 and 19, um, was on the list, but now we've added, uh, Rooms 20 and 10. Um, we're getting unit ventilators and condensers over spring break for 18 and 19, and Rooms 20 and 10 will get theirs over the summer. Uh, for Central, they're finishing up the fire alarm in a punch list, um, it's gonna be closed out by next week, which is this week. Um, replacing defective devices, um, staff lavatories are being completed. Um, there's the need for a door, and the project will be closed out. The steam room cabinets are done, countertops and sink is getting replaced in that room, and this will then, uh, that room will be complete. For maintenance, um, School Dude is the platform that's used, work orders are coming in, and people are addressing jobs. Um, and, uh, those, as they close out, they're returning that to Frank, and then there's a full closeout of that item. Uh, district-wide, um, scheduled, uh, maintenance for spring, there's tree work that's gonna be addressed in the spring, uh, with Rich's Tree Services. Um, the Medco locks, um, these are for, uh, special locks for doors throughout the district that have, uh, special keys made, it's not just like a, you can go to Home Depot and get this done. Um, so there's locks for Central for the restroom and the steam room. I, I just wrote notes for myself, you can't purchase these on the normal consumer market, and they have, we have a unique registry code, and have to authorize through Medco to get the locks, uh, just for safety, security purposes. Uh, in terms of district ride, uh, roof leaks, we had a company come and repair, um, these leaks previously, and we checked them, um, at some point last, uh, so on March 5th, I think we had some rain going through those days, and the repairs were holding up. Uh, I know a company is still gonna be looking at Millington. Uh, the sale of the dump truck is in progress, uh, we have the photos, and those should be, uh, it should be listed online this week. For integrated pest management, um, we have routine service calls and inspections going on. Um, they're anticipating, or the district is anticipating, um, you know, some complaints that start to happen with the spring, like ants, um, and so, um, they're, they're ready for those, and have the service ready. Uh, in terms of capital improvement projects, uh, PSEG HVAC Direct Install, um, that's a program that, uh, we're working with HVAC Mechanical Contracts to see if we qualify for this program. Uh, the project replaces all of the rooftop equipment, we're now focusing on Millington, and we hope to also add Gillette. It is a direct replacement with more energy-effective equipment than what we have. Uh, PSEG could cover between 40 and 60%, depending on, uh, of the cost, depending on the qualifications, and then the balance would be financed for 0% over five years. Um, they're really gonna look at the age of the equipment and the energy use, um, in order to determine whether or not we qualify, uh, much of our equipment is older. Uh, preliminary capital improvements projects planned for the Gillette School fire alarm renovation. Gillette School has been surveyed, and a plan will be developed, and we'll go out to bid. Uh, Millington School Library renovation, they're, uh, working with, um, Mrs. Dawson and the librarian to get all the new book stacks and furniture, that'll be a summer project. For Central School Room 34 renovation, they're working with Mr. Vittarello on getting this room up to date. Vision to make it one larger classroom that can be used for multiple classes at the same time, maybe professional development, um, classes, and that's also a summer project. Um, in terms of Rod was mentioned, and that's it, it's the best I can do.
It was pretty good.
There's a whole side type that lost, well done. It was a lot, so, uh, Alex made it look easy. Uh, any questions for me? Okay, great, uh, thank you, Superintendent's report.
Okay, well, last week, we had Read Across America Week, and we had our Riding the Reading Wave theme, along with a lot of beach scenes and a lot of fun, uh, and it was very inspiring for the students. Um, I don't think anyone had a better time than the superintendent, but I'll leave that to the side. Uh, I wanna thank our staff, because they really, they really did a fantastic job with, um, with everything, really, and just the coordination of it. Um, we had a number of teachers step up and be leaders in this area, and it was really great. Uh, we had generous volunteer mystery readers come in, um, Lieutenant Chimbriello and a couple of the officers came in to read over at Gillette, um, in the APR. Um, but it just, I saw a lot of parents coming and going. On a personal note, I won't name all the teachers, but I had 10 wonderful teachers invite the superintendent to come read in the classrooms, and it just made my week, it was busy, wonderfully busy, I'll say. Uh, the students were just tremendous au- audiences. Uh, on the agenda, we have a revised mentor plan, and I just wanna point out one thing about this. I wanna thank Brianna Fisher, uh, for reviewing and revising the plan as part of her administrative internship with, uh, Principal Dawson. Couple of pieces of good news, we had, we learned last week that six of our students moved onto the county level of the fire prevention contest. Now, this is on top of last year's good news of having the two end up in the calendar. Uh, so we're hopeful, the next level is the state level, so we'll find out if we do have some invitations for our students for next year's calendar. Uh, and just this morning, we received news, um, that both of our robotics teams made it to the finals in the state competition this weekend. They ended up taking second and third places, I think, I think the second-place team was just nudged out at the very end. Um, but, you know, phenomenal results, they were there with the top 10 teams in the state. And, um, and then Mrs. Boomer will, will give the highlights this evening of the budget. We have another meeting scheduled next week, as everyone knows, for the board to vote on submitting the tentative budget to the county education office, so thank you very much.
Uh, any questions for Mr. Alexis? I will attest, he was very excited to read, because I had, I speak with him on Fridays, and he made sure that we ended, so he could get to Millington to do his reading. So I also, I did, I went to my son's classroom, I don't know of other board members, and it was, um, it's, it was a lot of fun. So we thank the teachers for inviting us, because it's very exciting for us, too. Okay, Robin?
Uh, so tonight I wanna talk about the highlights of the 24-25 budget that, um, uh, you all got it, received a copy by email that I hope that you've looked through, and I apologize if I, it's gonna be repetitive, because going last isn't always best. Um, the proposed budget for the coming year is $22,938,909, and I am pleased to announce that we are maintaining consistent local tax levy of 2%. Furthermore, um, our state allocation increased $155,222, which allowed us to provide for some additional support for our educational initiatives. We're moving $1 million to be allocated from capital reserve for use with the capital projects. As you delve into the details of the budget, I am hopeful that you'll find that it's reflective to our dedication to providing the highest quality education for our students, while also upholding our financial responsibility to the community. Moving on to the expenditures, next year's budget allocates an additional $103,000 to the curriculum budget. This increase enables our district to enhance instructional programs, but also sustain several programs that were initiated in previous years with grant funding from COVID relief. The tentative budget also retains all positions, including the librarian at Central, which is currently vacant, and the two additional full-time powers that were approved by the board in January, ensuring continuity and support throughout our schools. Furthermore, we have expanded our faculty with the addition of a new steam teacher, which en- enhances our focus on science, technology, education, arts, and mathematics education. We've also allocated $15,000 to the Summer Institute, which we've heard so much about tonight, to encourage our students to continue to flourish during summer break. In line with our commitment to our one-to-one technology initiative, the 24-25 budget includes an allocation of $56,000 for desktops, $47,000 for iPads, and $144,000 for Chromebooks, as well as additional funding for steam supplies. When we look at capital improvements, we have several significant projects, of which you've heard a lot about tonight, but I still wanna mention them. At Gillette School, we're prioritizing the replacement of the outdated fire alarm system to continue to ensure the continued protection of our students, staff, and visitors. Additionally, we're embarking on the renovation of a project to transform the instructional space of the Millington Library, to create a dynamic and modern learning environment for our students. Lastly, we're excited about the renovation of the Technology Room, I believe it's Room 34 at Central School, into a versatile, multi-use space catering to the diverse needs of our students, and facilitating a variety of educational activities and events. These capital improvements represent our ongoing commitment to providing safe, inclusive, and conducive learning environments that inspire excellence and achievement for our Long Hill students. I wanna thank the board for their review of the proposed budget during the past week. Your insightful questions and feedback will be invaluable in ensuring the fiscal responsibility and alignment of our budget with the needs of our students and community. Your questions will be addressed at Wednesday's finance meeting, so please get your questions into Mr. Alexis, so that we can review them and have good answers for you. Finally, I want to remind everybody that the vote to approve the bu- tentative budget will take place at the March 18th, so next Monday's meeting. A video recording of the budget presentation is going to be available on the district website shortly thereafter. The final budget vote and presentation will take place at the May 6th board meeting, thank you.
Thank you. So from here, any questions are gonna go to Mr. Alexis regarding any of the budget and the documents. Everybody has the information on the, and what you got for the meeting today, and then we're gonna discuss those questions Wednesday in finance, and then everyone will get a response back by...
Thursday, Friday?
Thursday, Fri- I was gonna say by Friday, that's the plan. Just what we thought at finance was that you guys may have some of the same questions, and this has happened before, so it's like, let's aggregate those questions, and then give a response to everybody, so that everybody has the information moving forward into Monday. Well, thank you, um, again, uh, to your team, Robin, and to Mr. Alexis for working on this. It's student-centered, student-driven, and that's what we want, so, um, I think there's a lot of, um, good things that are happening in it, and also, as you said, keeping the 2% cap, and we're very happy.
I have to say, I'm really proud of it, it was a lot of work, everybody pulled together administrators, staff, that, a lot of collaboration in, in what was kind of a tighter year, but we, we figured it all out, and I think we came up with an excellent budget for Long Hill.
Great, thank you. Okay, comments from the public on agenda items. Okay, moving into resolutions, um, we'll get started. So Karen, will you move in minutes, items number one?
So moved.
Second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Rubelov?
Yes.
Ms. Case?
Yes. Uh, Crystal, will you move in financials, items number two through 17?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? Roll call?
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Rubelov?
Yes.
Ms. Case?
Yes. Uh, Dan, yeah, we move in, uh, special services items numbers 18 and 19.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Rubelov?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Um, Anne, will you move in personnel items numbers 20 through 28?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, or questions, sorry, roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubelov?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Um, Tom, will you move in curriculum item number 29?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Rubelov?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Um, Justin, will you move in policy numbers 30 through 33?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Rubelov?
Yes.
Ms. Case?
Yes.
And then Melissa, we move in other items number 34 through 42.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Did anybody go to the, you know, meeting the cast? I was just curious.
My son won and he loved it. Still has the tattoo from it, so I don't know what that says. And I can't address it tonight, so maybe tomorrow. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. Nyquist?
Yes.
Ms. Rubelov?
Yes.
Ms. Case?
Yes.
Okay, any items for discussion? Unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, any comments from the public? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Anybody want to stay later?
Yep.